The proposal for annexation and received some protest.
Yeah.
From residents in the affected areas, correct?
Yep, so with that, city went through the annexation by resolution process to try to annex that. Notices were sent to the property owners in the three respective developments, letting them know that the city intended or would like to annex that area, that they could file protests to the annexation. City received those protests to the annexation proceedings. The city subsequently decided to proceed with mediation. And under the century code, the mediator is actually appointed by the governor's office. So we made contact with governor's office this winter, discussed mediators. The governor's office wanted to appoint an attorney from Bismarck area to be the mediator. That attorney is also lobbyist, so he's been lobbying during the North Dakota legislature session. So there's been a delay in these proceedings. I received a letter from the governor's office on April 6th saying that they had appointed the mediator to handle this annexation. And then I received a letter from the mediator on April 12th, just saying, you know, who he was and requested some information from the city. Our next steps will be, I'm gonna contact him. I have some questions on who will be on the mediation committee. That mediation committee is provided for in the century code. And it's made up of people from the city, the annexation area, township, county, if they would like to be a part of of those proceedings. So again, I'm gonna talk to mediator, ask the mediator what they would like us to do as far as who's going to be a representative from their respective developments. My thought is one to two individuals from each development to represent that development. And then obviously representatives from the city, the township, and then we'll ask the county if they would like to participate as well. And then likely, we'll see where we're gonna have mediation proceedings that has not been discussed at all. And again, only received one letter from the mediator. So that's kinda where we are now, is just trying to set up what are the next steps to move forward with this mediation now that session has is getting closer to conclusion.
Is there anything that can be done at this point in time? Sounds like we've already received communication that mediator's been appointed, but if an agreement could be reached between those residents and the city, could that stop the mediation?
Yeah, I mean, that's the whole point of the mediation, is to try to develop an agreement between the city and the developments. So that's what we're gonna be working for at the mediation. End goal is to come up with a agreement on annexation. Again, if we could have that before, great, but it's likely that that's what's going to be the crux of the mediation proceedings.
I just have a couple of questions.
Introduce yourself first.
I'm Stephanie Landstrom, 510 Cheyenne Street Orchard Park. What communications have you had with the governor or the mediator, Mr. Croker?
I have exchanged emails with the governor's chief legal counsel to discuss appointment of mediator.
And when did they take place?
My discussions with the governor's office?
Yep.
I'm not sure.
Have you had phone conversations with them?
I'm not sure, one, at least one phone call.
Well, it's a little disappointing to me, I think I speak for others, that you're having ex parte communications with the governor or potential mediators, when we're clearly parties. And in addition, we specifically asked back in January, when we had initial correspondence, to be included in all correspondence. And then to find out that we're even having an update by just randomly catching the agenda for the meeting tonight? It doesn't foster any trust.
That was actually at my request, because those of us that are new on the council?
Well, and I appreciate that, and I'm glad, but it brings to light the question that there have been communications, and we're parties. I find that completely unacceptable.
So, Mr. Mayor, under the statute or under century code, it says that the city's supposed to work with the governor's office to set up an appoint, or to have an appointment made for mediator, which we followed those proceedings. And there's been no ex parte conversations to keep anyone out. And I've exchanged correspondence with residents in the development, we kept them involved. Nothing has really happened, it's just been appointing a mediator to this point, which they've come about that. I got a letter last week that the mediator was appointed, and so it's been one week. And I sent an email.
I disagree. You only sent an email because Jamie Pfeiffer reached out and asked you because it was on the agenda tonight.
Not my responsibility to be emailing everyone in the developments.
You made an agreement with me that you would copy me on your correspondence with the governor's office.
Do you agree that we're parties to the annexation? I, I mean, we are entities within the annexation. We're just asking for fair communication with, do you know, who is the mediator? Have you discussed mediators?
Happen, we're just not there in the process.
Have you discussed mediator, you said there was a mediator appointed?
Mr. Mayor, this back and forth, at this point, is not seen prudent.
I know, I'm just trying to.
Further this, again, I'll be contacting the mediator, and the mediator and I are going to discuss how these conversations take place, who he wants on the mediation committee. Nothing has happened, information will be exchanged amongst all parties on the mediation committee. This, this has not gone as far as what is being alluded to right now. It's simply, we're just, it's very early in the process, and people will be included, and the discussions will be had. No one is citing any information.
I'm not, I'm not, for my part, I'm not alluding to anything. Who is the name of the mediator?
Pat Ward.
Okay, I'm just really not understanding why we as parties are not included in this process. I mean, with all due respect, it's not just the city and the governor appointing a mediator against us. We are all involved in this process. I disagree with how the process has been handled.
I produced an email that you sent me saying you would copy me on any correspondence you have with the governor's office.
And that's, if I said that, then that's fine, show me the email, but again.
It sounds to me as if this is standard procedure in just getting a mediator appointed. And you didn't have any say in who that mediator was, that's a separate issue, correct?
The appointment comes from the governor's office, the correspondence was with the governor's attorney.
It should come, have come to all of us. We were on the, we were CC'd on all of the correspondence. We, I feel like we are just as much a party to this as a city, we are equal parties.
I don't disagree with that, but there are some procedural things that happen, especially when it is specifically in the century code that an individual is supposed to set up the process, if that makes sense? What I, what I will say is this, there were some conversations had by some people expressing an interest in revisiting this. And possibly coming to some sort of an agreement or an arrangement absent of mediation. I don't know if we can or can't do that at this point, but.
Anytime, I think, I don't think it's, that could be happened at any time.
I can honestly say that this back and forth isn't doing anything to foster anything, because we're willing to come with our hats in hand and say, hey, let's talk about this. I've been brought up to speed, set the conversations this afternoon regarding some meetings that were had, and some details and stuff. And again, I'm on side, so there's two sides to every story, right? Isn't even worth my time, if it's this much of a hot topic over an email appointing a mediator with the governor, to entertain this, or do we need to simply say, let the mediator handle it?
I can't speak for everybody, I mean, I'm.
Depends on the city's willingness to listen to options that they were not willing to listen to before.
They didn't really get any options.
You know, I would say.
We brought forward an option where we would enter into an agreement with the, with the city, where we would pay our fair share for the reconstruction of Wall Avenue. Lucas recommended, you don't even listen to it, entertain it, talk about it, and that was the end.
Would you step up and join?
And I would just, one last comment, I would take a little bit, a little bit of an exception to some of Mr. Croker's comments. The township maybe did indicate that they weren't interested in helping out, but the township has not said the entire area has to be annexed. You can just annex the road, take over the roadway, make your improvements. I think there's a little bit of a leeway in there, thank you.
And I just have to say, we did go back and forth on multiple meetings. And where we're at with it is we're trying to be fair to residents, that everybody's paying the same taxes. I mean.
To the city?
Right.
We can have that, I mean.
Well, I'm just telling Sarah where Cory and I are at.
I wanna understand, the reason I rejected this evening the agenda is so that I can understand better, because there's, I think there's an opportunity here, I really do. We've got a couple of council members, and that's not to dismiss the hard work, it's been done, don't get me wrong. But I'm really questioning if this has to go all the way to mediation, or if we could listen. But you bring up a very valid point, what, what really makes the folks that live in these three areas different than the folks that surround them completely when it comes to taxes? I, I'm curious, is it?
We have no city services.
What city services are you looking for?
None.
Well, city services, water and sewer, they're not gonna pay city's water and sewer.
That's okay.
Well, that's gonna stay on their own, they're gonna have their own water and sewer, and they're gonna pay their own water and sewer. We're not charging them for that. It's just city taxes versus township taxes.
But we're in special assessment districts, the water improvement.
Yes, we would be.
Even though we're not gonna use them, they put us in the special assessment.
And that's a whole nother ball of wax.
That's for, that was for all future, in case at some point, we had to actually help with the water. If something goes wrong, where the state water comes in and says, you guys gotta look up to city.
That's, that's.
Then it's there, it's not for anything right now.
So there's.
Well, and also that wasn't, that has not gone through.
Okay.
But there's the deal again, with, with charging people for something, had plenty of conversations with, for something that they might use someday, we should make them pay, because one day they might use it. I don't know what you think about that.
I struggle, because I too am paying for something I'm not using, because I'm on my own septic system, I'll be frank. And I don't know if we're gonna resolve that today, but if you guys are standing.
But it's all part of being in the city, I mean, if the city, we probably wouldn't mind being in the city. If the city had an attitude other than, there's this bottomless pit of money out there, and if we want some more, we'll just take it. And that's the attitude that we've seen, that's the attitude that people in country acres have seen. And that's what we're trying to avoid.
That's really the sticking point here, it's.
There's more than that.
There's more than that, but.
The thing I would add, well, the city initially went to the township. After we met as a group, I went to the township. And they explained that there is a mechanism for our parties to be able to be assessed for the road. And we can force the township to do it by vote. They coded the century code. We brought that to the city and said, you know, you could have probably already started building the road if we would've agreed to it in November.
And that doesn't include the city's involvement?
But the city was not interested in.
Why are you supposed to ban your fair share of the tax for benefits that you would get from the city?
Well, the city offers us no services.
Really? What road runs into your development?
There's a single road which I'd be willing to pay for, and that's the wall, that's on the dirt side of the wall.
How about your drainage, where's that go?
In the ditch.
Goes to Chestnut?
No, I know, it drained before Chestnut was there, it almost finished in 2076. And when the city came and moved that, they put the drainage in, and they, and our water, it's where it always does. I mean, you cannot take somebody's water and say you can't send it here anymore, that's the math that they.
I'm just playing devil's advocate.
He doesn't live in my neighborhood, so they're too separate.
So, so I wanna understand, so.
The best the city could do would be to spray for mosquitoes, which the Cass County Attorney does. So there are some services that have been offered by the city to bring us into the city. And again, I think the settlements that you're looking at want to be good neighbors, and have offered to pay for their portion of the road, and offered a mechanism by which to do that, to stave off annexation.
How much, how much tax difference are we talking with that annexation?
It's at least a minimum of seven hundred to nine hundred dollars each year, just for the city part. And then a special assessment is a whole nother story. And then there's a.
It's less than a thousand dollars a year?
That's what we've been told, but who knows?
But it doesn't, but it opens the door to being assessed for anything and everything.
Oh, welcome to my world.
That's right, I don't wanna be part of your world. I'm trying to avoid your world.
It's just that we're, you're hurting.
Well, you're gaining the benefits of living in a city without paying the same as the neighbors that have to pay those same prices.
I mean, I used to go around and around, we bought a house in Stanley Township, we don't use any city services. It's very simplistic to say, but just because the fact that we're surrounded, somehow you force, force us to take our private property, do something different with it than what we purchased it for. It seems, it seems unfair.
The other thing that was bothersome is we protested the city expanding to the west. And we were told that we would never be annexed unless we wanted to be annexed by the city.
We were told that too, Cory.
Yeah, when we were out there discussing about the sewer line, I had, we were discussing about roads at that point.
We will not annex anybody that doesn't wanna be annexed. If there's an annexation, it's gonna be, you guys come to us and say we'd like to be part of it.
So that, I mean, that goes back to like the original scenario. And so we're protesting it because we were told we would.
That was in 2017. And that was in 2017.
Okay, so the new members really just wanted a little bit of history, and I don't think we're gonna be able to hash this all to any.
Nope.
I do wanna know, Lucas, if there is some sort of, if an agreement was reached between the city and these members of our neighborhoods that are currently not a part of the city, if this mediation could be called up, this expense, this, all of this could be just stopped and dead in its tracks? Or if we're too far into the process that we can't do this and it doesn't pay, and we need to let the mediation take its course? I'm asking.
It's not been started, I mean, to me, it seems like we're so far off. They don't want to be annexed, the city wants to annex, is there any compromise? The city's going to compromise, but the city wants to annex that land. And that's why I think it's beneficial, as you've seen tonight, the city council has somewhat acted as mediator. That's the whole purpose of that mediation, is so the parties can all meet and talk, how can we come up with an agreement on annexation?
I'd really like to see an agreement, because I don't like to see anyone forced in anything.
Right, the problem is that their position, Lucas's position, is that annexation is the only option, we have to be annexed. So it's just the terms under which that happens. And I'm of the opinion that we don't have to be annexed, and what needs to be accomplished can still be accomplished. But they don't wanna hear that, they don't wanna talk about that, and they won't attain that.
So the big difference if you're annexed is really less than a thousand dollars in your tax, and the potential for?
Well, they already have proposed, or they're engineering a waterway into my Westburg Drive, which will be at least twenty-five thousand per property owner, or per lot.
Is that true?
We planned it, it's being planned, just because if we do improve Wall Avenue, we have to make improvements to that prior to construction for any type of underground work, otherwise we're big enough to brand new road. So it was a task to me to put together an estimate and a feasibility, as to what it would take to extend sanitary sewer to that area, being that it is serviced right now by individual septic tanks. This was a way of, if something would happen, those tanks fail or something like that, they can't replace them, we can give municipal services to them. So that's as far as it was, was a little feasibility study and a cost analysis.
But it doesn't require them to go off of their own dependent septic services right now, correct?
No.
But we would still have to pay. We would still be assessed twenty-five, at least twenty-five thousand per lot. Just, and that's different than all of the, that's just two of the three here.
And our area is not even, doesn't even come out on Wall Avenue, on this portion of Wall Avenue that isn't gravel, we come out on asphalt.
On the asphalt, yeah.
And we've offered to pay whatever a fair share, pay that, rebuild that piece of asphalt that we drive on every day. More than fair that we would pay for that.
Well, and also with the roundabout, you know, they, they're not annexed in, so they didn't get assessed for that. Like everybody else had to get assessed for that, but they use that just same as the rest of us do.
Well, anybody that does their shopping in Fargo, it's basic, pays their taxes for infrastructure and diversion. So, everybody goes shopping down in Wapington and Breckenridge, I mean, realistically, they're all contributing to something, so.
It's, it's kind of a long-term decision as well. I mean, we're, we're in it this deep right now to annex. You know, we don't do it, then it's, you know, everything that we all as residents have to pay for that gets special assessed, that they don't want, which I completely understand, why would you want?
And we are, we are more than welcome to negotiate and agree to pay our fair share. We wanna be good neighbors, we just don't wanna have it forced upon us.
You wanna, well, you wanna be good neighbors, except you don't wanna pay the city taxes or be included in.
We're not, we didn't buy in the city.
I mean, most of us have been here.
But the city does surround you now.
Well, yeah.
You're saying the city does surround you now.
But that's not our fault.
Right.
Didn't say it was, I'm just saying the city surrounds you now.
Right.
It does.
Well, and it's just, it's about looking at what's fair.
Fair to who?
Fair to all the expenses of the city.
We've always paid all of our taxes.
To the township.
We pay for the fire, I mean, in case people don't know, I mean, we pay for the fire department, we pay our surrounding township taxes. I mean, I, we're, it's not like.
Stanley Township moves our snow.
Yeah, we maintain our own road.
We pave to pave our home road, we maintain our wells, we.
It's not like we're out of taxes.
I'd be happy not to set foot in your park, if that's what.
I just, and it's really hard, it's really hard for me to understand, and I know that you guys are probably gonna hate me because of my position on this. I just, I might end up living in my parents' house one day and purchasing that from them. Like, I go there every day, my parents live there, I talk about this all the time with my parents. That's where I work, is in, in that development. I, I don't see how it's just, we're in it, we're dealing with it, it's the right thing to do, to be fair to everybody. We're not trying to take away your water and sewer, we're just, you're surrounded by citizens that have to pay for roundabout, and they have to pay for the parks, and they have to pay for the city staff that takes care of the community that I grew up in, that I live in, that my parents live in. I mean, it's, I just don't understand, like, how you can say that you're, you're not part of this community.
What about every farm, you know, are those people part of this community?
A farm outside of town, you're surround, you're an island, are we gonna have a Swiss cheese of community? Because of people that get discounted taxes at township, because we're just, I mean.
But don't those people use the same services that I do? Don't they come in and?
The farmers outside of the?
Yeah.
Well, right, you usually have a border that's resident, that's development, and you guys are a whole in the city's borders.
It's unfortunate, it's unfortunate, it sounds like this was brought in to play, when this development was made, that there wasn't a city surrounding it.
It was 1976, 1973.
And since that time, some growth has happened, which honestly, I, I'm fearful to even go into what's coming. Because we're trying to keep a thumb on it, take a breath, slow it down a little bit, so that we can all process and adjust it.
And we are all.
But if we're arguing this much over a, a pretty simple annexation, and you make some very valid points, I don't want you to feel like you're dismissed here.
Very few annexations in this state happen through resolution. Almost all of them are the residents come to the city.
Maybe Lucas might know, in the state, I don't, I don't normally enforce annexations, but.
An annexation by resolution, I'm not sure how many there are.
From what I've found, it's quite rare.
I have a, I have a very distinct interest in trying to avoid mediation if possible. Unfortunately, I didn't have the history, several of the other members didn't have the history. I don't envy what you guys have been through, because I can see that, that there's no ground to be reached here. And that's, I think that's ultimately my question, is that if we come back to the table, if we sit down and we really work something out, is there a way that this can be reached, or is this a complete waste of time?
It's, it's up to the, I mean, it is possible, but, you know, the city has to be willing to listen.
The city's position is pretty much annexation, right?
Well, you're part of the city now, so you have a say in that.
Correct.
Well, so what is, okay, we do the Wall Avenue, they agree to pay their, their fair share of Wall Avenue. Then the next project, whether, you know, it's County 17, and then we have to go through, and they have to agree to help pay for stuff? I mean, nobody wants special assessments, you know, I don't want them.
None of us do.
And, but, and also the scope of the project that was outlined for County 17, for Wall Avenue, was a hell of a landishly expensive.
For what project, for what?
For Wall Avenue west of the bridge, it was a hell of a landishly expensive, compared to the money that's being spent to pay Wall Avenue east of the boat.
Now, two different animals, so.
Yeah.
Cory, I wanted to comment on that.
Well, I would say that the scope hasn't even been decided entirely of what all that project entail. I know engineering has been putting together, looking at like the soils, and looking at the different options, what can be done, getting the preliminary items figured out, that we know, whatever improvement we do is likely going to have to happen. However, for the, what is the true, how many, you know, is it gonna be multiple lanes? Is it gonna be two lanes, is it gonna be a concrete road, asphalt road? Is there gonna be a bike path, is there not? Sidewalk, what all is gonna be included, anything? That hasn't been defined entirely yet, because we've paused the project due to this mediation and annexation, because it's not in the city. We've had to get our ducks in a row for the project, so that way, when, whenever that time would come, that we're able to move forward with the project, we're able to do it, we're not having to wait for a year or whatever for engineering to be done, or dump a project on, or engineers saying, hey, we need you to tackle this project now, by the way, it needs to be done in a month. Trying to do that on a scope of a project like this is, it isn't fair to anybody. So that's really what has been going on. So the numbers you keep referring to are, we're asked to give a general, general idea of extreme end and low end. That's what, and what you're pulling off of is the extreme end, the high end.
Those are the drugs marked down in front of it?
And, and that's what I'm saying, is we're, you're referring to, and we had a public meeting to try to get a general conversation with the public of, hey, what could this road look like, what could it entail? Not, oh, it's gonna cost me X number of dollars. We had a general idea of, okay, if we do this type of product, it's gonna cost about this much with these variables. But it hasn't been completely all defined, because it's been paused, and that's what we're going through.
The, the most special assessment policy is under review.
Yep.
For good reason, okay? That being said, that too could have some variance.
Yeah.
I have some of the history that I need right now.
I mean, certainly, I believe, if not on this agenda, on a future agenda, the city council could do a motion to suspend the procedure for mediation, and go back to a conversation with us. I think you'd find William Partners in that conversation from the residents.
I'm gonna tell you right now, that as a smart business lady, the last thing I would do is suspend a mediation before I had that conversation.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
I would have that conversation first, I would lay out all of the terms, and then if we were able to reach an agreement, I'd be more than happy to suspend that mediation. But that's not up to just me, because I have four other people sitting here very heatedly looking at me going, what the hell are you doing?
I'd like that too, we don't have even a date set for mediation, so that's what Lucas is working on.
Can it be held randomly, informally, or does it have to be formal discussion?
Pardon?
What was your question?
I'm curious if informal discussion can be had, to kind of hash out some of these parameters of a time of mediation, or if it has to be formal discussion, because there is mediation potentially coming.
So, as far as those discussions, who would be a part of those?
To try to reach some sort of an agreement.
My concern with that is, we don't know if they're designated to represent all individuals in the developments, so I don't know how others feel. We can certainly work with whoever wants to work on some sort of agreement before mediation, because I get it, that, that is the best option, it's the most cost-effective option, if we can come to an agreement beforehand. But again, as has been discussed tonight at great length.
And we're still a long ways away.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to, I mean, we've, we've talked about it, we've had multiple meetings, I mean, Cory and I were pretty tired of the conversations, because they just weren't going anywhere. And I think, you know, what do you guys, what would you guys be willing to deal on as far as getting annexed? Is, I mean, I don't.
That's, that's the question, from the city's point of view, and I can ask you one by one, is there no path that does not include annexation?
I don't know yet, I'm still processing the new information that I just got. But I can tell you that I will formulate that opinion now that I've received additional information.
I mean, if there's, if the city's point of view is that there's no path forward that does not include annexation, then we may as well go. But, I mean, if you guys are willing.
Right, and.
So that's.
But that's kinda what we got to this point now, so I mean, but.
But now there's some new council members that get to weigh in.
Yes, there is, so.
Okay, so you guys can do it then?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine, if you're, if that's, if you want to do it, that's fine. But we can talk about that, you know, if you want.
Yeah, I mean, I, we were, we've always been open to discussion, but.
I, I'm not afraid of any of these discussions, but I will tell you that annexation is the ultimate goal of the city and I, I believe that there may be too far of a distance.
Well, and, and annexation isn't out of the question for, for us either, it's just the terms of that annexation and we do have serious trust issues with how those are going to be enforced going forward.
Agree with you, so maybe we start there? Because if we're willing to give a little, I think we're willing to give a little. And I think that's where the discussions start, but let's line out those terms and let's be very clear and very consistent about what they are. No bullshit, pardon my language, no, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. Um, let's just be completely transparent because I'm getting the impression that there's some history here and there's some some feeling that there wasn't transparency and that things are being hidden and that's not the goal, the goal with the city is to work together and to not force anyone to do anything and I feel like you're in that position, but I also feel like I'm getting a lot of pushback and like you're not willing to even
Oh, yeah.
go the other way. And so, can we, I don't, I don't know if it's even worth restarting the process, but it's worth it to me. It's worth it to me. And that has nothing to do with the fact that I have an election tomorrow, quite frankly, I don't wish this on my worst enemy.
Well, and, but Cory and I's goal was to, was to come to an agreement that where everybody could win.
But I think everybody's realizing that nobody's winning here. And the time has passed and maybe we need to take a step back, have, take a breath and look at this and say realistically what can we accomplish and we acknowledge that yes.
And, and a big, a big, big piece of it is the fairness of the assessments that happen in the past and trying to avoid it. I mean, there's been a lot of assessments that many, many people, it's really not fair. And, I mean, you certainly can't blame us for wanting to stay out of that.
I think it's just, I think it's the sewer assessment is the big thing.
Well, there's, there's others too.
Yeah. Well, the sewer and the roundabout are the two assessments that I.
And the Wall Avenue coming up.
And, and the proposed assessment district for Wall Avenue as far as who's paying for that entire stretch of road.
And we've had, we've tried to be as transparent with residents and have those conversations in public meetings and make sure we give enough input.
Not flexible, not, you listen, but nothing ever.
Well, we haven't even done that yet.
We're going through a special assessment committee meeting now, we're trying to figure out if there's something, policy change that we can come up with.
But you can see why, I mean, in the past, I mean, there's not a lot that's happened as in history that would lead us to trust. So it's gonna happen going forward.
Well, we've got some, we've got some different things happening now and I believe that some good things are gonna happen. And I'm here to try to be a part of that, I might not be here tomorrow. But if there's something that can be done and if I do have that opportunity, I think myself and several others here feel that it's best to try to work it out and to try to be fair and equitable if possible. If not, we can always fall back on mediation, right Lucas? But the clock is ticking. So I would ask you all, I know I'm gonna go home and reflect on this tonight, probably not gonna sleep very well as it is for this conversation, let alone with this, but I want to thank you for coming, for giving us some perspective because the new members here desperately need that, there's gonna be things coming up that are going to impact that. I think that we have a lot of things coming and I think we need to focus on the new past, some of this, so we can really look at the big things. But at the same token, I don't want to undermine the importance of your position, the fact that you've been here since nineteen seventy-six and the fact that we have these different facets of our community. Like me, I've only been here six years.
Well, I haven't been here that long in our development.
It doesn't matter.
I've been here since nineteen ninety-eight.
We got people that have been here and have had land in their families for fifty years and this is such a balancing act and ultimately it's not gonna please everybody. It's kind of the ten, three, and one rule, if you've ever heard of it, for every ten constituents, right, ten of your neighbors, three of them aren't gonna like what you do and one of them's gonna hate you, if you can add them a ten thousand dollar check, they're just gonna flat out hate you. And that's not what I want, I wanna be able to try and we're willing to try. So, take that with you, chew on it tonight and if you're open, I am open, I think a couple other people are open, I know you guys are situated right now, we can provide updates, but I'd like to try to get to that point if possible.
Appreciate that.
Okay, so let's leave it at that, then we can try and, you guys, talk about that. All right, Lucas, Jim, is there anything else you want to talk about?
Nope.
Pretty much gone through, gone through it, all right. So let's move on to your gardens.
Are you okay?
Lucas, you got that one.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, this is just a standard, um, ID agreement for Terragard's third edition. This was presented to the developer last week. Brent, is this one you want to refine?
Yeah, I think we're fine with this one. The developer had some questions or concerns or items that were not applicable to this actual agreement, so, uh, we may have this development as a future conversation for some other items related to it, but the overall developer agreement, I don't believe we had any issues on from the developer, so.
Yeah, so Mr. Mayor, Terragard's third edition, um, two point two million dollar, uh, project. They're required to provide a letter of credit in own for seventy-five percent, uh, which is our standard, uh, percentage, um. Parkland dedication, uh, developer agrees to dedicate Lot eleven, Block one, Terragard's third addition to the Horse Park District. Uh, in addition, there's also a payment of an amount of one thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and twenty cents that'll actually get paid to the city. Uh, and if the park district wants to do any improvements, I think they can just request, uh, use of those funds from the city. Water services provided by the city, wastewater goes to lift station number six and then, uh, everything else is our standard uh, language that's, that's been used. Something that we're trying to decide, uh, staff level, uh, the city's working on bonding for, for three projects, uh, the timing of them. Trying to figure out, um, how that's gonna work, Southfield Farms' third addition is ahead of Lakeview Terragard's third. Uh, so we might be bringing, uh, decisions before the council, uh, at your next meeting on which these projects can move forward because of, uh, timing associated with them. Unless we need to discuss any of that tonight, Brent, or we can wait, uh, till the next meeting to discuss that. So tonight, I guess the action I'll, uh, would be acting on the ID agreement for Terragard's third edition.
Okay. And, yeah, like you said, we're okay with that one.
Yeah, this one we're okay with, I believe we actually have one, uh, this one signed by the developer. On this, he said, so it's ready to go, um, like I said, they uh, reached out to us today with a couple other items that they wanted to discuss, uh, however, those aren't applicable to this ID agreement. So we would come back at a later date with those items for conversation, so.
Okay. All right, anybody have any questions on that? Do I have to look for a motion to accept the agreement?
Motion to accept. Nothing wrong with that one.
Do a second? Okay, now wait a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. This is on B where we had a little changing of the wording, Brent, just double checking.
Yep, the first one, just so you see, is, uh, addition of ID agreement.
Okay.
I could, I just want to introduce it real quick here. Uh, for this one, it's for the Lakeview addition, uh, improvement district twenty, twenty twenty-one dash three. Uh, the ID agreement on this one is being brought forward to you, uh, we are still seeking comment, or if the developer has any requests for changes or anything, however, do the timing and what uh, Lucas brought up about the bonding, we want to keep the ball, keep the wheels in motion. If they do have any concerns or any changes, it's like I said, like Lucas said, these are fairly standard. Uh, very few areas changed within these agreements. If they do request to change anything, we'll bring that back to you at another meeting, probably the next meeting. Uh, however, we do need to have this in for, you know, in place for when we're going through our bonding process and all that, so that is why you're seeing it right now. Um, however, like I said, the, the agreement is basically identical with the costs reflected different, the park dedication, those components are, uh, more, are applicable to the actual development and Lucas collaborated on that, so.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, uh, again, same song and dance, uh, this project is, uh, eight million, five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Again, seventy-five percent, uh, letter of credit is required from the developer, uh, so that'll be an amount of six million, four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Land dedication for this development is Lot two, Block two, Lakeview addition, uh, in addition, developer will contribute uh, three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to the city. The city also, um, will be purchasing lots for, uh, storm sewer. So Brent, do we want to go over, uh, the price of those because that'll need to be approved
Yep.
by the city council as well?
We can do that.
Okay, so water service in this development will be provided by Casperell. Uh, part of this agreement requires that they get the developer's agreement from Casperell
Okay.
for the city will, um, construct any improvements. Uh, wastewater service runs through Forestman, uh, through the city and, and goes to Deer Creek. Storm sewer lots, so the city, uh, will be purchasing, or under this, the terms of this agreement, uh, purchasing Lot three, Block two, Lot twenty-three, Block six, and Lot forty-five, Block six. Uh, the total purchase price, uh, for those, uh, is based on a dollar twenty-seven square foot. Uh, so the total purchase price is three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-two cents. So that's, that's, for, just so the council knows, that's under consideration under this, uh, ID agreement. Uh, is, is to purchase those storm sewer lots, which is not, uh, uncommon, the city has, has done this in, uh, previous developments as well. And then a lift station, uh, is located on Lot one, Block seven of Lakeview addition, so this development will utilize uh, the lift station that's already been constructed, uh, or that will be constructed in Lakeview if it's not already.
That pond lot purchase is included in the eight and a half million dollars right now, that estimated eight and a half million dollars, the pond lot is included in that, it would be special assessed back to the properties.
This is the Babbling Brook, Brook project, yes?
Yes, this is the Babbling Brook, Brook project.
Did you do that out yet?
I believe we have the.
Yeah, so that's.
We are one hiccup away through a maintenance agreement. And that's what I, when we get to that point, I would recommend we approve it based on, on a, uh, a maintenance agreement with the developer. We tried to meet last week and the landscape architect was out of the office, so I believe our meeting schedule is set up for this week for that.
You know, that's one of my triggers, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So.
That one, Brooke?
The drainage.
Yep. So, to touch base on drainage really quick there, Lucas brought up the lot purchases there. Uh, you see these three lots right over here, the ci- as part of the regional drainage for that area, the city bought those lots with the Cub Creek development, that whole project. Um, there's a lot here with a pond and then this pond over, it would be over in this area here and then the Babbling Brook over here. Uh, that's to serve as the fifth component of that regional drainage. So, uh, the cost of the pond lot purchase and the regional stormwater benefits are actually included within the red boundary, so everything within this blue plus the red. Those are, that's the benefit district for this regional component.
I don't want the maintenance nightmare on that thing.
That is why we'd have the maintenance agreement and the maintenance agreement would be, we've fo- founded to be best as a separate agreement from the ID agreement because that would carry on even after the development is all built out. And like Jim said, you're trying to meet with the developer to get that maintenance agreement hashed out, we'll have that brought on as a separate agreement. Because it's a little bit, it's, it's a very different animal than what the city has ever done before for a maintenance agreement.
But if we create all this, then our leverage is pretty well shot, yes?
Uh, no, you still have leverage of not having to, you don't have to award the project.
Contract, put open bids, or doing that, you still have.
There's still more stuffs.
Part of this ID agreement says that they have to, the city has to enter into a maintenance agreement for it, so that's where I was going with this, is the
Yep.
Um, that agreement will be drafted between the city and the, the developer, the HO, whatever they decide, uh, is gonna be there because the ID agreement will expire, uh, but the maintenance agreement can have a longer term, so we want that.
Yep.
Good. Thank you.
So again, that's, that's also referenced under the, the storm sewer, uh, section. And then, uh, the rest of it, uh, Mr. Mayor, it's just the, the standard language that we use in our ID agreement. So with these ID, ID agreements that are all standard, there's just certain things within the development for those variables that, that, that's basically the only thing that needs to change, so the stuff that we go over with the council is something that is, is unique, uh, to this individual development and so those are the the items that I address with the council, uh, if you'd like to go more in depth, let me know, but, um, it's up on the screen, I see, see if you all have it, I should have it in front of you. Uh, and again, standard language that we use and then we include exhibits of petitions, maps, uh, and then the engineer's estimate of costs, so you know we're wrapped with this.
Okay, so we have a special assessment district that has been created. And we create the district for the reasons of obviously our low interest loans, bonding, potential grants, things of that nature, right? What are the odds that if we, as a council, agree with something that the consultant brings to us about making some changes, that we'll be able to go back on any of this?
Where we go back of, like, if they haven't fulfill, or they haven't built out the development, for example?
The special assessments are already in place and have been assessed to residents at a certain rate, but then the consultant comes back and we, as a council, agree to make some changes. Can we change anything behind us or do we have to only change moving forward?
I guess I don't understand.
Yeah. Help me out here, are we talking about the?
Are you talking like a redistribution of specials?
Correct, I'm talking about a redistribution.
Oh.
That's, uh, the specials aren't distribu- they, they had to fall within the assessment district boundary, um.
I think what you're asking is the three large lots on the south side.
Correct.
They're gonna get a big assessment that's gonna have to be broken up eventually. And what happens typically is the county contacts, finance director, or the city, and the city re- the city finance director then reallocates those specials based on the methodology that was in place at this time, at the time of approval to those, to those lots.
Okay.
So in November every year, the county lets the city know that either property has had lots put on or it's being platted, because of that, does the city want to reallocate specials on those lots and so the city then provides, uh, those numbers to the county?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't know what you were meaning.
That's where I was going, and I want to make sure that I'm understanding the process correctly because we've got a lot of, as you know, overarching concern of special assessments, we're in the process, I get it, but, um, I want to make sure that we're not missing anything.
And, and so for these new developments, the city relies on the developer to come up with an initial list of their proposal on, on assessments and so that's where, uh, it starts because the developer has an idea of how they want assessments broken out and, and they include uh, costs on the undeveloped parcels as well to try to spread out the cost of that initial construction. So, like with this one, it's, it's all new development and it's all tied to this, uh, area that's owned by the, the same developer. And then part of it is, is for that regional component of storm sewers, the developments in that area that we're done.
This is so hard, we went from a community of no specials overnight to a community.
Well, and again, it's important for everyone to know that developer petitioned the city for these specials, the city isn't just letting.
And this is just for new development?
Just for new development.
They're coming to the city and saying, hey, will you please do this project for us? You know, because the other, the other options for them to fund it privately and to privately fund, uh, a development of this size would just be a very difficult thing to do.
I just want to make sure that everybody understands that, that this isn't something that the city is just leveling special assessments against people, that there's a reason for this particular site and there's multiple different sites, so don't mistake that, but that helps clarify, thank you.
And that's both of these agreements that I've discussed tonight, developers have petitioned the city requesting that the city do the specials.
Yep, so this is just new development, just making sure everybody understands that. Jim, you want to go through all three of these, or we can just put them all together, unless you want to do them separately?
Well, my question to you was, so we have been provided with the plans and specifications by the developer and the design engineer. We have been reviewing those with public works, we are still working on that maintenance component of that. So what I was going to suggest to you is that we approve the plans and specifications contingent upon the maintenance agreement being in place. Uh, Sarah, you made the comment, that's pretty important to you, so is this something that you think, we should hold it up for two more weeks or do you think? Okay. So then we, so B and C, then we'll table. We'll come back, get the maintenance. We'll come back, get the maintenance agreement worked out, bring the maintenance agreement back to you guys in two weeks, hopefully, and then we can address the other two issues.
I'm not trying to be a stick in the mud, but that needs to be in place.
All right, do you wanna just table all thirteen and we'll just bring it all back in two weeks, Lucas, what do you think?
I think you need the ID agreement.
If you want to do the ID agreement, we'll table the other two.
It's not gonna hurt to table it, cause we're not making a decision on the other stuff.
Okay, so let's do that, then we'll table thirteen, bring it up again on the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yep, all right, so let's move on to fourteen then, Jim.
Yes, so the next item is sanitary sewer improvement district number twenty twenty-one dash four, lift station sanitary SA dash fourteen. This is a lift station to service, I believe it's sections, it's part of the Lakeview addition. So when the developer started this project, there's lot one, which is shown on the plat, has been dedicated to the city for a lift station. This subdivision has a ridge that runs through it, and there is sanitary sewer on the west side, but it doesn't get all the way to the east side. So this proposed sanitary sewer lift station fourteen would be installed at the, on lot one, and it would service the remainder of the Lakeview addition and the land to the east of that. Project cost is, am I right sheet here? Estimated to be about seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, we benefited to this, to the, uh, special assess to the benefiting areas, those areas that can receive sewer service because of this project would be assessed. Project consists of a lift station and Forest Main, Forest Main will connect to the existing Forest Main to Fargo, so. I don't know if you're, have that, whoever's running the, you can, you're ahead of the game or behind.
I'm behind, there you go.
You can go to the.
Engineering report.
That's the one. Go down if you wouldn't mind. Again, again, right there. So you can see that box right now, that is where the diocese owns land, that is approximately where that lot is, it's been dedicated to the city. The star is the proposed lift station, the alignment is kind of variable through that point, but it'll go south along what would be Sixty-third Street and then over connect to the existing sanitary sewer that goes to the SSL in Fargo. So in order for the Lakeview addition to receive service, this lift station is needed, and this is part of the master planning for utilities within that section of land.
Okay, you got any questions on that part of it?
Uh, these are not in that, this district is different than that. So if you go to the next one, Britain, the railroad, nope, it was in the same report, but it was like the next. So if you go to the district boundary map, it's the railroad property, the railroad, the old railroad line is the end of the next, keep going, one more. Next one, right there. So that is the district for, for this right now, so the old railroad bed is the dividing line on the west. On the north, it's Eighty-second Avenue or Eighty-first Avenue, depending upon where it is. And we're planning with sufficient depth to service that entire remaining area along Drain Twenty-seven.
They were included in the previous, um, district for a drainage, just not for lift stations.
Yes, just, just drainage, I know it's not all the properties, it was just a, if you're in here.
That's why this was a separate project, it's got a different, different service area, larger service area. And these are treated like a regional component, a regional asset to the city.
Any other questions on this one, guys? I think, Jim, I think we can bundle all these up, right?
You sure can, I can go through the second one, so, uh, the second one is just the resol- if you approve the report as presented, we just discussed, there's that one, then there's the resolution directing engineer with better plans and specifications. And the last thing is the engineering services agreement, that's our standard form that we've been using with the city. It's basically a percentage of construction cost based on a table that's in an agreement, and then we have a summary, a summary. Summary at the end of that, so I'll run through that quickly, apparently clicked the wrong button on the printer, yeah, no listen.
Are you charging the city for all that paper?
Not a bit, yeah, saving my eyes though.
We'll do a change order again, Jim.
You want the services agreement open?
That's right, yeah, so we've got the engineering report, which is generally not to exceed five thousand dollars. Design services, a percent of construction estimated around fifty-five thousand. Electrical engineering is a subconsultant at seven percent of the electrical items, about two thousand dollars. Right-of-way easement acquisition, I don't think we're gonna need it, but it's in there just in case, that's five thousand. And then construction engineering services is generally not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Like I said, the design engineering, this is our standard form with the city, and it's based on a percentage of construction. The rate table is on the last page, so just for those of you who are new to the, to the party, so. Those are the three items that I have for that one, so.
Okay, anybody got any questions on any of this stuff? This is pretty much boilerplate when they're putting in the sanitary line like this. Jim, just for referencing again, that the lift station that we got there is gonna support this area, and is it gonna support any extra area in the future?
Just, so it's in the district.
Yeah.
So it's gonna support the Lakeview addition up front, and then as Cub Creek builds to the south, or some other development happens to the south and east of that, this will be sized adequately.
So I was trying to say that that's why the location of where that is.
Correct, it's for the Lakeview addition.
All right, any other questions? Who was gonna accept the motion to, for all A, B, and C, we'll do them all together, to approve the lift station. Okay, Naomi makes a motion.
Second.
Chelsea is the second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, fifteen, you got this one too?
Item number fifteen is sanitary storm sewer and street improvement district twenty nineteen dash one, and storm sewer and street improvement district number twenty nineteen dash three. What I have before you is a change order in the reduced amount, or negative?
That's what I was gonna ask you, is sure that dash is supposed to be there?
Dash is supposed to be there, in the amount of minus one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. There were various factors that came to light during construction with the contractor, we met with him, we discussed all those potential, just some, you know, construction scheduling with the school not being real well, some completion of some things, some completed things in a reasonable time manner, and we came to the agreement of a deduct in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the contract, and then liquidated damages of twenty-five thousand dollars will be assessed on the final. So in ultimate, it's a reduction of two hundred thousand dollars based on some various performance of the contractor and, and liquidated damages, so we have a negative change order.
Thank you, Jim, I was just gonna.
Let's go, we'll have to hang this one on the wall somewhere.
Well, are we foreseeing some issues that we're gonna have to deal with?
No.
And spend this money on?
No, we still have, we still have all of our, as far as warranty work, we still have our warranty, we still have all that. Some of this, I shouldn't, I, I would say, I did speak too soon, there potentially could be some additional costs that would, would come out of this, but I don't consider it to be very, very much, cause what's remaining is items that would have already been, had to be completed as part of the original con- contract. So, no, this is gonna be a line item deduct of one hundred and seventy-five thousand.
We, we might be able to have some costs that still benefit that same area that impact that project, that project area, so.
Okay.
Motion to approve change order four.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second?
Yes, I was involved in that, I would like to approve that, because I'd like to make a statement too.
Proceed.
For the last three to four years, I've watched this contractor request extensions on their contract every fall. And after sitting through this and some of the difficulties that they encountered, which weren't all theirs, we decided to hold them accountable on this particular project, because there were impacts to the city. Under normal circumstances, that is not something that we have done. We chose to do it on this project in the hopes of, one, being fair, because this is a reduced amount, two, continuing to work with this contractor while also holding them accountable for the deficiencies on the project. And I believe that this was the right thing to do, I believe that this contractor will continue to work with us in the future, and I believe that this contractor does good work and will ensure that we don't encounter these same issues again on a project.
Thanks, Mark.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so I got a motion from Chelsea, second from Sarah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, thank you, Jim. Who's got the next one, Lucas or Jim, who starts it?
Um, I'll start off with it, Mr. Mayor. Water, sewer, storm, and street improvement district number twenty twenty dash two is the construction of Eighty-second Avenue, south of the high school. As part of this project, there was a continuation of Lakeview Drive and extent, extension to the south, so to speak, that connected the north Lakeview Drive to Eighty-second Avenue. And that would be between the Horace Lutheran and the high school lot. As part of that project, there was land that needed, land to be acquired to construct this from the school, from a developer, and from the church. The school and the developer got together and are working on a land swap to benefit both parties and to facilitate the construction of this roadway connecting the two. This has part to do with the Lakeview addition, there's a commercial district, there's some residential in there, and this is a nice gateway into their commercial area on the west side of the project. So we are preparing a plat that was submitted today for the land swaps and rededications and the right-of-way to connect these two roads, but the contractor is out working on this. And in order to eliminate any further delays or eliminate any more further cost increase due to remobilization, remobilization, we went to the three entities, the church, BR Development, and West Fargo School District to obtain temporary construction easements to construct this, these improvements, storm sewer and streets, on this land before the plat gets approved.
Access roads?
Access roads.
Is this access, I mean, what is this for?
Uh, it's connecting, it's connecting Lakeview Drive and Eighty-second, so it's, it's an access road, yeah, you could say that.
Okay.
It's completion of Lakeview Drive to Eighty-second, so it's just a, it'd be on the east side of where Horace Lutheran Church is, it'd be right in that area, and so we have more connectivity, and you'd have a road network all the way around the schools.
Nice.
So anyways, we've reached out to all three of those entities, BR Development signed their easement today, West Fargo School signed their, developed their agreement last Wednesday, we're still working with the church on, on theirs. We do have an appraiser working on the appraisal of that property prior to an agreement or a purchase, whatever it needs to be. But we want to get the temporary construction easements approved by the city council, so that work could proceed on that. It'll be happening very quickly. Do you wanna discuss the construction agreements at all?
So temporary construction easements, again, are for the Horace Lutheran Church, BR Development, and West Fargo School District. No consideration, or there's no money changing hands for these temporary construction easements. We haven't had any requested revisions to the easements, or pretty straightforward, just saying, can the city have access to do the work on this property? It'll restore the property to the best of its ability, minus the, the project itself. And then the temporary easement expires upon completion of the project, recording of a plat encompassing the temporary easement property or two years following the date of the temporary construction easement. So relatively straightforward, it's only a page and a half document, and then signature page and the exhibit that shows the proposed layout of the future extension of Lakeview Drive. So again, that's for all three parcels, and your state engineering prepared the survey that will, that will have attached as an exhibit.
So you're waiting for Horace Lutheran for what, your appraisal, you said?
We, we are working on appraisal for the potential land purchase of that, we don't have the purchase before you right now, we just have the temporary construction easement. So the other two have signed their documents.
Okay. All right, any else, any questions on this one? I think we can put one, two, and three together on this one, can't we, Jim? Lucas?
Yeah.
It's the same thing, it's just different entities, so.
I don't know if you guys have seen this, since I printed it out so big, I don't show you. This is the Lutheran Church's portion, this is the BR Development portion, and this is what the school is gonna dedicate, and they're gonna do some swapping of those parcels.
So really quick, we had so many things going on in that, in order to tackle them individually, we felt it'd be very, very confusing and cumbersome and difficult to do properly. So that is why you're gonna see it in the future as a replat of that area.
Yep.
So, and as city, BR Development, School District are all working together on this.
And everybody's getting along great.
Yep.
Nice.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do is look for a motion to accept the construction easements on one, two, and three here on part A.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Sarah makes a motion, Jeff's second.
And I'm abstaining.
Yep, Chelsea's abstaining, so, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and motion carries, so part B here then on that one, Jim, you got that?
Part B I do have, so this project was bid and awarded early last summer. And due to some other land, so at the time, the Lakeview addition was in the process to be platted. And due to some circumstance outside the city that, that wasn't ever brought to fruition, so that Lakeview addition wasn't platted. So there was some issue with getting the right-of-way to construct what is Eighty-second Avenue. That's not the connection piece, it's the east-west portion just south of the school. So because of that, construction got delayed to starting in December. It was very late, and we were very fortunate, and due to the weather that had held up long enough to get that going. Well, as part of that delay, there was an increase in materials for twenty twenty-one construction season versus twenty twenty construction season. And I did go back and look through, the contractor provided us with what their cost increase was from twenty twenty to twenty-one, did it by bid item, broke it all out, and what we came, what they came up with was an additional seventy-three thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars eighty-two cents. Now I did go back and look at the bid tabulation from last year, and I, we would still be under the low, the second bidder at that point. So we are saving money by doing it this way, if we would rebid this this year, I think it would be quite a bit higher than what it is showing right now. So this isn't the standard operating procedure to do cost increases per year to year, but this one, the notice to proceed from the city was issued just so late in the fall that there was really no way around it with the contractor. So we did negotiate these prices with them, they did send us a proposal that was basically a lump sum, and we said we're not gonna accept a lump sum proposal, so that's when the contractor came back with the unit prices and what it would be per unit price. I didn't want anything that was just, you know, one deduct, I wanted it to be broken out as two, so we could evaluate what, what the items were and what the, what the increase was.
Is this to go underground?
This is.
Okay, did they, so the notice to proceed was late wide from the city?
We weren't gonna give them notice to work on a project that we didn't have easement, right-of-way or easement for.
What did you say?
Uh, we didn't, we weren't gonna issue a notice to proceed on a project where we didn't have right-of-way or easement to construct those improvements. And the reason we didn't have that is, like I said earlier, Lakeview addition was in the process, that was supposed to dedicate the right-of-way for the south half of Eighty-second, for some reason, not because of the city I, that I know of, that was halted until this winter, this past winter, to dedicate those lands. So it took some time to negotiate a right-of-way, it took some time to get the right-of-way easements in place and the dollars in place. That was all taken care of, notice to proceed was issued in, I think, November, by that time, of course, they're scrambling to get everything done. They did come back, finished up the connection with the storm sewer, finished up some other piping. A big issue with that was getting the connection. Uh, the big issue with that was getting the connection to the storm sewer done. The high school connects to that. The high school is experiencing high groundwater. They're having to de-water quite a bit. And they needed a place for that to go, so they didn't lose any more of their schedule or get behind any on their schedule. So it was, the city decided to go forward with the project at that time and go that way, so.
Yeah, wish it'd been easier.
So, well anyway, it sounds like this is a better deal than having to rebid the thing though, cause it's, uh,
Prices are going up.
Well, plus the time.
Plus the time, yes.
I don't like stuff like this.
Yeah, I know.
None of us like stuff like this. This is just unfortunate that it had to get so late.
There's a reason we went back and forth with it.
Yeah, we did.
Take the first offering.
But they did say they could, I mean, they did get a little further on it, just.
They did get it done. They did tie, they did help out the construction.
That's why, I mean, we, we debated this too as to whether we take it or wait.
Also, this notice proceed, uh, typically we would do a notice proceeds at the staff level whenever all the ducks are in row on this. Uh, the nature of this project and all the different variables that we had going on, we actually had a notice proceed approved by the city council, not by staff.
There were some adjacent property owners that.
Yeah, there, there are a lot of different variables included in this and, uh, we felt it was most appropriate to have done by council. I believe it was actually brought to council maybe two or three different times.
Three times, twice.
Yeah. So it was up for discussion multiple times at the council level.
Alright, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to accept change order number two here.
I'm abstaining.
Okay, Chelsea's out.
Come on, somebody else.
We'll make a motion to accept change order number two.
Alright, Jeff makes a motion. Can I get a second? Alright, Naomi does a second. So, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Alright. Okay, this one I must have missed earlier. Who's got this one, Lucas?
It's a fun one, so.
So it turns out the legal age to smoke is now twenty-one.
Oh, that's right.
Yep.
Not eighteen anymore. Uh, so your ordinance updated to reflect the change, uh, and that was a federal mandate.
Yep.
So, good luck changing it. Uh, twenty-one years of age, so we, we changed, uh, Title Ten, uh, which talks about prohibited sales of tobacco, uh, from eighteen to twenty-one. Uh, that was the, the main change that had to be done in Title Ten. It was just changed in a year, uh, to twenty-one. But Chapter Twelve, uh, I believe Brent was approached by the school resource officer, uh, basically saying that City of Horace should look at updating its tobacco ordinance to allow it to prosecute or, uh, to have any violations go over to municipal court. Uh, as it stands right now, uh, if you're class B misdemeanor, uh, if you're, if you're caught.
Kids smoking.
Which is, yeah, pretty hard for a kid. Uh, so, you know, the ordinance was, was revised to basically say, uh, it's a non-criminal offense. First time it happens, twenty-five bucks. Second time it happens, fifty bucks. And then you have to take a course. Uh, third time, two-hundred-and-fifty, and you have to take a course. So it's, it's more lenient in that it's not something that's gonna necessarily go on, you know, criminal record. They leave this twenty-five dollar fee, uh, the next time you're in front of a municipal judge.
And this is if they do find someone that's under the age of twenty-one and not adults that are.
And yes, we have had, we have had a handful of situations already come to us this, uh, this year. And we anticipate when the high school goes online, this is gonna become a more frequent issue that comes about, so.
I just wanna make sure that we're not penalizing grown adults for anything and that this is strictly related to an SRO officer that maybe has kids on school property.
Technically, it'd apply, like Lucas said, it would be, cause the legal age is twenty-one, so it does apply to anybody under twenty-one. Uh, the most common area that you are going to see though is in the schools or the school area. Um, at least that's what we've seen so far.
Yeah, so it's between ages of fourteen and twenty-one, actually.
I feel really stupid. When did they change the smoking age to twenty-one?
It's, it was last year.
Last year.
Really?
Yep, just kinda catching up.
We have a lot of children smoking.
Oh, yeah.
God, my head is in the sand.
But again, though, this.
You can, you can go overseas and fight for your country, but you can't smoke a cigarette.
Yep.
Again, you said fifteen twenty-five dollars.
It's a federal deal too, so yeah, like you said, Lucas, good luck changing it. So.
But again, though, it's also removing a class B misdemeanor, making it a non-criminal offense. So it's more lenient. Yes, it includes individuals that should not be included, uh, but the way the ordinance is not drafted, it's more lenient for the punishment.
Yep.
So no smoking and no boys.
Exactly, gotta stop doing that. Even when you're older. Alright, anybody wanna make a motion on this one?
I don't, I mean, is this law, like, we have to do this?
Unfortunately, yes.
I'm sorry, I struggle with this. I mean, when you got military guys, you know, I just.
This actually eases up. I'll remind you, it goes from class B to non-criminal, so it does ease up.
They're gonna be harassed too much.
Yeah.
So, do you wanna make a motion?
Some motion.
And this is just the first reading, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Noise ordinance, alright, who wants to pick that one up?
So I can take that one too, uh, Mr. Mayor. The noise ordinance is rather subjective in due time if we need an overhaul. Right now, we have, um, basically provided another standard that the city can apply if there are issues where the city receives a noise complaint. And that before, there was no time restriction. So basically, anytime there's a noise that, that annoys someone, injures someone, whatever you want to define it, at any time, uh, it's a violation of the cease ordinances. What we did is we provided another standard, uh, that says, um, so under, section twelve oh eight oh three, the standards which shall be considered in determining whether a violation of section twelve oh eight oh two exists, which is the noise violation, uh, shall include but shall not be limited to the following. One, the volume of the noise. Two, the intensity of the noise. Three, whether the nature of the noise is unusual or usual. Four, whether the origin of the noise is natural or unnatural. Five, the volume, intensity of the background noise event. So those were the standards that were already in place. All we did was add one that says whether the noise occurred between hours of nine P M and six A M. So it's just trying to insert the timeframe in there somewhere without.
And this would remove the exemption of construction.
Okay, so we'll have to change.
So we'll, we'll have to add that in there of, the, the main point of this way, or the reasoning behind this proposed amendment is because we were getting several complaints from residents of where there's construction noise, like a new home being built, for example. Uh, some instances where, uh, contractors are out framing a house or putting siding up on a house until eleven-thirty, eleven-forty, five P M, uh, right next to a house where people lived in. Uh, another example, uh, was just recently here, there was a contractor excavating a lot right next to houses being built until eleven o'clock at night, and then they're out before six A M the next day. So it's just trying to get the contractors, have an ordinance to where we can, uh, hold some accountability in respect to the residents that live here, uh, making sure that, you know, we're, we're trying to find reasonable time period to where work can still get done, but at the same time, people can still sleep at night.
Yeah, be respectful.
Some of the sundown is pretty reasonable.
Yeah, and ninety, or, what we're trying to look at is a specific time so we can have that. And this gets to the ballpark, especially during summer hours where you have your own ballpark of sunup, sundown. Uh, a lot of times you'll see contractors, uh, like in the morning, they like to get their equipment off the trailer or move around a little bit. Um, but they're typically not starting work right away. Um, but then after nine o'clock, a lot of times you're having families start winding down for the night and, um, we're trying to keep it, you know, reasonable within timeframe for that perspective and also work needing to be done. We recognize that there is a period of time where, uh, sundown isn't until almost ten o'clock at night, roughly around ten o'clock at night here, so. But that's for a pretty short period of time throughout the year, so.
So what does that mean for, um, like, me and Dave?
Well, this would be, the council can, uh, still grant exceptions to that. So they have the authority to do that. It's, like I said, really is geared towards the law of obstructions. You still have other ordinances that allow for like fireworks, for example, um, during certain time periods. And then yet, where you have a noise exemption, so I believe that was addressed in the policy ordinance too.
Individuals can get permits from the city. If they know that they're gonna have like a concert or something, then they just apply for a, a permit from the city and they can, they can have that concert for like two days or something as the, how the ordinance is drafted. And so what, so what Brent's talking about with the, the construction, uh, is under exemptions, uh, following uses and activities shall be exempt from noise level regulations. One of them is any construction or maintenance activities at the construction or maintenance site. So what we can do there is just include this time range that we, we did previously in ordinance, include it there so that we, they know not to do construction between hours of nine P M and six A M. That's what the council wants to do. Again, this is first reading. We can make changes between first reading and second reading.
Also, just so you know too, we have consulted with, you know, asking some of those residents that have expressed concerns or complaints about time periods. Uh, we've asked them what they feel is reasonable time. And in addition, we have reached out to different builders. I know some folks are in their thrill about saying Home Builders Association, but Home Builders Association has been reached out to. Uh, they have not provided any comments. We have approached them multiple times seeking feedback since they represent home builders across the area. Uh, we also have had discussions with some of the home builders to just see what they are seeing is reasonable. A lot of times their reaction when saying, hey, we need to have the noise under control a little bit.
You reached out to H B and they didn't respond?
Yep. So, yes. They, they have not given us a formal stance of where they are in time. Uh, however, like I said, we've also contacted other, you know, different builders, some that we thought might be having a home built, uh, that have had issues and other ones just doing business within town. And this has not been expressed as an issue of the time periods. None of them have said, yeah, that's unreasonable. So, uh, just wanted to pass on that feedback.
Okay, any other questions on this one, or, otherwise I think this is, you want, okay, so you want us to do this one tonight?
Yes.
First, first reading, so if you're, if the council's okay with that.
Yeah, you'll add that.
Revolutionary ownership to include the time under the construction exemption, then I'll do that and have that ready before your second reading.
Perfect. Okay, you wanna make a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion.
And that's with Lucas adding in that extra language he was talking about. Alright, can I get a second from someone?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries.
Alright, nineteen.
Okay. Well, this one is addressing our finance director position. Uh, we got to say that, what, our finance director, Becky, she gave her notice here about a week and a half ago. Her last day is Wednesday. Uh, she accepted a new position. We're going back into the private sector. Uh, we are happy for Becky. She has helped us clean up a lot of different finances and different challenges that we've had. Uh, and gets, continuing to move forward. Um, what we are looking at, just two parts in the conversation. One is to help keep us afloat uh, with that expertise. And what that would be is a, uh, intern finance assistance agreement. Uh, what we, we've reached out to, uh, A two S has worked with us before, like when Becky was out on leave. They helped us stay afloat, processing the vendor claims. And also just doing general financial statements, updating that. We had a proposal from them. In addition, Cory did speak with Becky and Becky is willing to do a, um, independent contractor agreement. Uh, that would be significantly cheaper, less time involved. But that would, like I said, is just a bare bones, keep our head afloat, help process the vendor invoices, uh, also do, keep our financials current, so you're seeing the most current numbers. And this is to help keep separation of duties, so we don't have problems as much on the audit, saying that we're not separating our duties.
This is only until such time as.
Until we could get a new finance director hired. Um, also, uh, where Becky said is, she would want to assure us that yes, we are moving forward to aggressively seek out recruiting and try and get a new finance director. Um, the other component of this is, as we mentioned earlier, about working on special assessment policy. Uh, Becky has been involved in that process. We'd like to keep her in the mix and get her input since she has been working heavily with special assessments from our S A side too. Um, it gives a different perspective, more of a financial perspective. Uh, we are working up some different concepts that we, having that expertise of being able to dig into the finances deeper than what even I could, is very helpful. Um, so this agreement would also have that ability where we continue getting her feedback, experience, input on that project. So, uh, what we'd be looking for on part A is to approve a inter-finance assistant agreement, uh, as an independent contractor with Becky there. If at some point it gets to be either too much for her or it's been, we haven't been able to be successful in recruiting a finance director, then we could go to that A two S agreement and work with them. We've worked with A two S before, like I said. Uh, they have helped us out in similar situations on two different occurrences, so uh, we do have a relationship. It's just when we're looking at the cost and availability, the main person in, that we'd be working with from A two S is out in Bismarck, so she'd have to be working remotely on this. We just figured, let's keep everything going as smooth as we can and hopefully we can fill that position in timely manner. So, this would be, uh, the agreement would be for five hundred dollars per week. Um, that would give us about four to five hours of time with Becky, um, to be able to continue that work. After we go through that, then I go into the other parts. So I'd separate these two, cause they are too separate.
Agreed.
Wanna make a motion then?
Jeff makes a motion.
Second.
Chelsea goes a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Alright.
I'd probably need a roll call, would be good.
Alright, we can do that.
This is for nineteen-eight?
Yep, nineteen-eight.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so Sarah, Naomi?
Yes.
Chelsea, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Spending money.
Yeah, I know. Go ahead and go on to B.
Okay, the next one, this is a two-part component. Uh, it'd be in regards to the job description and the recruitment, the job description. Uh, we had one minor tweak there, just upping the amount of experience and consulting with, uh, Becky being in this position, asking her feedback of, hey, what would you recommend seeing different? That was, and also from what I've had, I've consulted with other, uh, finance exec, finance directors, uh, throughout the eastern half of the state. Uh, also talking with different recruiters to find out what makes sense. Um, and looking at our different needs and what expectations of the position are. Uh, the minimum experience required on that position originally was two years, so I'm upping it to five years. Uh, that's the main part. And then adding a component within there on the job description referring to, uh, that that position is, would at times be expected to come and do presentations to like council or at a public meeting. So, uh, on occasion, we do like to have staff, other staff members engage the council and be engaged in a public meeting. And we wanna make sure that we're clear and transparent about that expectation upfront in the job description, so. Uh, those are two changes within the job description we'd be asking for. The other part is for recruitment. Uh, recruitment costs obviously aren't cheap. Uh, I've reached out to the past recruiter we used for this, which I Bailey. I Bailey did a great job working with us on that recruitment. Uh, we thought the costs were pretty reasonable. However, we cannot use them again because of. However, we cannot use them again because of conflict of interest. They do our audit, therefore it'd be a conflict if they did recruitment for us. So. We had to go back to, okay, what are other options? Um looked at. Reached out to Hugh Life, who was doing or has been working with us on the city engineer search, which has been put on the back burner. Um and that's a whole nother discussion another day. However, they worked really well with us on that, but. They are gaining out of the recruitment business, so they will help us out like on city engineer search. Search, but taking on additional recruitment projects is not what they're looking to do anymore. Uh so we looked, we explored that option. Uh he did get, uh Hugh Life did give me a couple of recommendations for others. Work with. I reached out to A two S because the city has worked with A two S in the past uh on recruitment also. Uh A two S has recruited such as community development director position, even my position uh for the city. They've worked out pretty well. What you get with A two S on their proposal would be basically extension of the H R department. They would treat it as you're paying the cost per hours. Um if. We get somebody out there recruitment, there isn't a guarantee or like a re- a warrant or I I hate to say warranty, like a guarantee that they. That person would be in that position for a certain period of time. Sometimes you'll see that with different recruitment firms. They'll say, okay. We'll guarantee that person's in that role for X number of months or whatever or years. And if they're not, then we'll come back and do the recruitment again for you at either reduced price or for free. They said with the A two S agreement, they're working up a proposal right now. They gave me a general ballpark where they would fall in cost estimate. Um we're looking at around twenty-one, twenty-four thousand for what their services would be. Um but like I said, you would not have a guarantee from theirs. Uh they have worked with the city, like I said. They've done a fairly good job. Uh we have had challenges in recruitment before in the past. I don't think it was any fault of theirs or anything. It was at that time was pay scale was our challenge when we were doing community development director search. The last one I reached out to was Baker Tilly. Baker Tilly is their, they do all kinds of different things, but one of the areas that they. Work with is recruitment. Um it's a firm, they're look. The location I consulted with somebody in is down Twin Cities, but they're a national firm. They do recruitment across the country. Uh they have been, they're actually doing quite a big recruitment for different. Positions such as a finance director. They do have some open finance director positions. They're seeking out candidates elsewhere. Um some down Twin Cities and some other parts of the country too. Baker Tilly does work a lot with government entities for recruitment. That is not uncommon. Recruitment costs or recruitment is not uncommon when you're talking about a position like this. The finance director position, community development director, city manager, those are not unheard of to seek out recruiter for. Why? Because they're able to screen the candidates very thoroughly. They're able to reach out. A lot more than what the cities ever could do and also they have uh net- network base to where they could get the word out. To qualified candidates very quickly and um they know the challenges that those positions actually face. Uh working in a public sector position like a finance director is very different than the private sector. So Baker Tilly, the difference that you get with theirs uh is they would provide a guarantee. Guarantee is going to be a twelve-month guarantee. That's what they indicated to me today and they said that their base, their. Their base package for recruitment is twenty-four thousand five hundred, so it'd be just under twenty-five thousand, but like I said, you get the guarantee. And that's their package that they offer.
Have they sent over those donations for this?
They are getting them to me later this week. So we're trying to keep the ball moving on this and that's why I'm. Bringing it forth to you to have an open discussion of where we're at, what we have going on. Um. And see where the council would like to go, what they would like to pursue, so.
One of the recruitment for, you know, when we were looking around at different recruitment firms, I'm trying, I'm trying to remember who we went with when we were recruiting for Becky that time.
I Bailey.
I Bailey, yeah.
Yeah.
And so that's changed, but uh what we've tried to look for is so we can find somebody that can fill this position because this is a, you know. Little bit more unique because it's a city position as opposed to just a private. Um so that's why Baker Tilly is why we kind of looking for them because this is kind of in their specialty or wheelhouse, so it's something that they would know. When they recruited somebody, this would be what they would expect and not, you know. Not understanding how the city business works. That's kind of where, that's when we were looking and that's where he landed on that one. So I'm a little bit partial to that because I wanna, I want it kind of a guarantee, but I also want it focused on this, so we're not bringing in people and we're having to interview. That aren't, this isn't gonna be their ball.
Is there a penalty if they provide a guarantee?
Brent, there's not a penalty or something like that. What is it they'll, if if they come on board and you're thinking what, I don't know.
What I'm saying is they come on board, they guarantee their person for six months or a year. If the person lasts three months, is there a penalty?
I don't believe so. I believe that they would back it, but I don't have all the terms in writing in front of me, so I don't wanna tell you incorrectly. Uh typically how it works though is if it doesn't work out uh with that with that candidate, they'll do the recruitment again. Uh if it doesn't work out from the city's side saying, hey, it's just not working and we initiate that. Um what I've seen done before is they'll do a, they might do a prorated amount. Depending on the issue, they may say, no, we're either not going to cover it or they would cover it. So you'd have to look in the terms of the agreement. Um so like I said, I can't really answer that question without the agreement in front of me, so. Yeah, if the candidate doesn't last, they typically do back it though.
And again, that could be part of our, as we negotiate this with them, whichever firm we go with, that could be part of that conversation.
That's fair.
Yeah, so we know. Any other questions on this? I think what I'm, I'm gonna recommend to the council is the Baker Tilly. And what I'd say was we'd go up to twenty-five grand right now with the cost on that not to exceed.
It'd be authorized up to twenty-five thousand for recruitment services and approve updated job description to be. Include the experience from two to five years and the part of the public presentation.
Experience five years plus.
Yes, ma- that's the minimum.
Change it from two to five. Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Spending that kind of money to get.
Yep.
Yeah, or you have to.
Candidates.
Yeah, for what we're dealing with, yes.
Yeah, it's unfortunate the turnover in hand is also, I don't think they ever talked about that, but.
Yeah, I was going to, yeah.
Yeah.
Um that position, we use something more like preference, but. Um it's difficult to find people that can handle the pressure, especially with our growing community.
They don't like getting yelled at? Come on, where's the smiles, folks?
Yeah, yep. But no, that's, that's, that's a good point.
Plus, it's, you know, the working, the situation with everybody kind of on top of each other, you know, there's it, there's no. It's not quiet in there and then um also the expectations of the employees is really high because. You know, we have a smaller staff, so they have to do, you know, they have to cover a lot more ground and.
It's tougher.
Yeah.
So that's everything. If we can specialize this up, we should be able to find somebody, I'm hoping quicker.
Our goal is to find somebody in time manner. Honestly, it's going to probably take a couple of months to fill this position. Um go through that process, but.
So we're really trying to get somebody in here to help us finish off getting our budget put together because that's, that's gonna be coming up and it's earlier, this go arounds. And it may, it may be impossible to do that, but it'd be nice if we could at least get some help finishing it.
Well, they're helping make sure their financials are current.
Yeah.
So and then we're, I work with them on the budget.
Yeah.
Can you just clarify the twenty, up to twenty-five thousand dollars for me? Is that mean you have, like it's. If we, you don't, we don't have to go up that high.
Right.
It's.
Yeah.
That's our cap.
Yeah, that's our cap there and that'd be for the recruitment services. So if their costs come in under and they don't bill us for that, then that, but like I said, the, that gives us some leeway to work with. On it. Uh that does not cover if we have different expenses. That's just for the recruitment expenses with the recruiter. That's what it's for, so. Um if we have other expenses depending on how we go through like the interview process and uh sometimes you'll see like government fees will. Uh pay for folks to come and come do the interview. That is not uncommon in government for those type of positions. Um that's separate because it's not working directly with the recruiter, so.
Yeah, they'd come in and then they'd meet the staff that they'd be working with so that they have an understanding of what they're, who they're gonna be working with and that.
Yeah.
But we did that last time.
It sounds extremely expensive and I will tell you that it is. I struggle a little bit because of all the different social media avenues that we do have nowadays, but at the same token, to get the right candidate and to reach that pool. Those aren't the types of people that you find on E P D or ZipRecruiter, you know what I'm saying?
Not really, not for this position, that's the problem.
So. Yeah.
Any other questions, concerns? I mean, yeah, we unfortunately, this is kind of the deal. We've had to do this before where we have to spend money to get recruiters. And I mean, that's just to help us out. Otherwise, what happens is if we don't go this route, we're gonna absorb staff time. That we don't have to make this happen and that's.
Well, we're getting a good deal with Becky helping us out. Otherwise, we're gonna be paying somebody else a lot of money too.
Oh, God lost her for doing that.
Yeah.
She doesn't have to do that.
Nope, she doesn't.
Get us through, so.
She's doing a bridge for us and that's good.
Yeah.
So. Alright.
Motion to approve.
Yep.
With both caps.
Cap of twenty-five.
Recall that too.
Twenty-five, yeah.
Okay. Chelsea and Sarah, you did a second?
Yes.
Alright, I gotta roll call this one. So Sarah?
Yes.
Naomi? Chelsea?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, Jim, what do you got?
Alright, two weeks ago, I promised you some construction project status updates. Uh the weather wasn't too conducive, so today things started, so I'll give you a rundown of the list of what's. What's happening right now. So we've got sanitary sewer improvement district number two thousand eighteen dash one. That project consists of a lift station and a forest main. The lift station is in the Maple Lake Estates edition and the forest main is up to County Road. One hundredth Avenue and then over to where the A and L landscaping is. Uh that project is fifty percent complete. Main reason that one isn't further along is the guts of the lift station hasn't been, haven't been installed yet. The components of the lift station, the electrical. And on a project that just has a couple of items to it, so uh they're working on pressure testing the forest main um as of today. Next one we have is sanitary store sewer street improvement district two thousand nineteen dash one, Lakeview Drive and seventy-nine. As you know, we approved that change order. That project is ninety-nine percent complete. Uh they are working on some seeding around the pond. There's some work to be done around the pond. Uh let's see, that's that one.
The holes left on that one, Jim?
Pretty much, just some miscellaneous stuff, some punchless things, cleaning up some grouting and some other stuff, but most of it's just around the pond.
I don't wanna keep that one open anyway, but you have to.
You and me, well. Water, sewer, storm and street improvement district number two thousand nineteen dash six is the Cub Creek first edition. Uh this project is ninety-four percent complete. The work remaining on that is the sixty-third street shared use path on the east side. Uh that work started today. Um I think that will probably take them a couple of weeks and then that project will be done. Uh water sewer, storm and street improvement district number two thousand nineteen dash seven, which is the Maple Lake Estates edition. That project is fifty-three point seven percent complete. Underground utilities are ninety-five percent complete with some remaining storm sewer. And uh some other incidental items that need to be done. The subgrade crew and the dirt crew should be in uh this week from what I was told this morning. Uh water sewer, storm and street, you'll see a theme here. I D number twenty twenty dash one, Southdale Farms first edition. Uh the project is ninety-nine percent complete. Everything, all the pavement has been in place, all piping is in place for waiting for the electrical to the lift stations. And the electrical to the subdivision. The startup for the stormwater lift station is scheduled for Thursday. Water sewer, storm and street improvement district number twenty twenty dash four, which is the Lost River fifth edition. Uh the project is ninety percent complete. Electrical and pond work remains. The schedule we received showed them starting that work here within the next week or so. Anticipated completion of that is uh thirtieth of June. Water sewer, storm and street improvement district number twenty twenty dash two, which is eighty-second Avenue. We talked about that one earlier. The project is thirty percent complete. They're working on water services and then the uh storm sewer stub outs up the Lakeview Drive extension. Once that's done, then we start into the building of the road and that'll come right away. Storm sewer improvement district twenty twenty dash five, that's the old obstacle. We're waiting for a schedule from the contractor. And uh we requested that. And the last thing on the construction side is park improvement district number twenty twenty dash one. It's not a city project, but it is a park district project, so I like to keep you updated on that. It is approximately fifty percent complete and the completion date of that one is later on this summer. There's some garrison diversion money in there that. Certain items can't be, can't be paid for until later on this summer, so. On the design side, Southdale Farms is out for bids. Uh bid opening will be before the May fifth meeting. We'll have bids presented the next meeting. The water projects are, plans are being completed and finalized on the replacement project. They are due to the State Water Commission on Friday for inclusion on their June. State Water Commission meeting, so we're pushing for for that. I don't see any reason why the replacement project will be on there. We have a meeting with Kestrel Water tomorrow to discuss some of the nuances between Kestrel's water system and the city's water system. To make sure that those two cooperate and work together when the time comes for that. And then there are Chestnut. We're still putting together our final district documents to be distributed to the residents. We're keeping that project moving forward, so. Uh Lakeview Edition, we talked about Lakeview Edition. The plans and specs have been submitted. We're still gonna go through that maintenance agreement. And then Terragard is third is the other one that we've talked a little bit about tonight. Uh we're supposed to have plans, I think, at the end of the week is what I was told for review by the consultant. The developers, uh engineers, so. That's a nutshell of what's, what's going on in that world, so. Any questions? I know Jeff, I, you've got some, we've had some conversations on Maple Lake Estates and. I suppose since it was addressed at the city council meeting last time, we did meet with Sue. I called her. When the weather wasn't real great, we decided we were going to evaluate what's going on out there when things are a little closer to done and see what type of remediation needs to be done by the contractor for her. Her shrubs and that.
Was she okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, she was. We've also been talking with the contractor about speeding down Seventy Second Street, talking about tracking on mud. And we've had, held their hand for quite a while, so I think the sheriff was even out there one day last week, I believe, in the morning.
Yes. Little late, but you know, never heard.
So are they gonna, when are they gonna start moving that dirt away from like Sue and some of those other areas there?
So that, when I, last I checked, there was some storm sewer runs that had to be installed. There's some backyard drains. Once they got those done, they're gonna pull away from it. And I hadn't heard, I think that's one of the outstanding items on the storm sewer stuff that needed to be installed yet. They're working on, since the weather wasn't real fantastic, they're working on some of their testing and some of their acceptance. That needed to be done prior to the Rome building.
But like to mitigate it as soon as possible so it doesn't cause any extra damage that's going on.
I was gonna say, are we gonna be replacing shovels and stuff here?
The contractor will like.
More than likely, it'll be the contractor that has to do that.
What I'm, what I'm saying is the contractor.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. We, we just wanted to stress the contractor would be doing it and uh we're expecting them to be responsible for that.
I just don't wanna make sure that we have the documentation.
Yeah.
Everything taken care of now, so that does not become a.
You, somebody took pictures already.
There are pictures, I feel staff took pictures and got them in the bio.
There's pictures documenting it already, so.
We've met with, met with them, so.
Yeah.
Just so you know, contractors still owes me about eighteen evergreens.
Do you need some?
I don't, no, I don't have a plan for like we have.
Oh, I have things.
Probably prefer like ones.
Bigger the better.
Bigger the better.
Yes. Okay, Russ noted.
No, we've been working.
Okay, alright, that's what I was gonna say, I think.
I have five contractors in my yard.
Alright, anything else, Jim? Alright, Brent?
Okay, um a couple of items I have. One is uh legislative session, just one update I have. Okay, um, a couple of items I have, one is, uh, legislative session, just one update I have for you is there's one bill called Senate Bill twenty forty-six, twenty forty-six. Uh, that was up for a hearing or up to the, the House here today. I don't know the outcome of it yet, I'll ask tomorrow. Uh, however, there are a couple of concerns that the league, the cities expressed to us. Uh, mainly what it did is they were trying to fund North Dakota PERS, Public Employee Retirement System. Uh, we do not participate in North Dakota PERS, so it does not affect us in that manner. Uh, but what they were trying to do is find funds to fund North Dakota PERS for their, the state employees. But then they would leave all the other participants out, so you're talking like teacher, your schools, counties, cities, out of that mix, they would have to fend for themselves or figure out, uh, some other costs. And then what they did to, what they're considering, I don't know, like I said, the action of it, but in order to cover those costs for North Dakota PERS increases for the state side is that they are looking at taking away the highway distribution dollars that we get for the cities and counties. That would result in roughly a hundred fifteen to a hundred forty thousand dollars of lost revenue to sit to like horse. Other cities obviously more or less depending on their population and different factors that go into formula. Uh, I will be asking about that bill, how, what the outcome was, I'm sure I'll be hearing about that tomorrow. Um, but I did reach out to Representative Howell, just expressing concerns of the impact of higher distribution funds for the city because that helps fund public works, that helps fund our public work staff and being able to pave the roads, maintain, do different things like that. If that money went away, it means general fund has to help out even more. So, keeping you posted on that, uh, as I get more information, hopefully I'll have a more update on it. At the next meeting, you'll probably hear about it before then, if, if it does pass, I'm sure you'll probably hear about it in the news or something, so. Uh, wanted to give you a heads up, sometimes council, you see emails from League of Cities and that's example one came out here just recently, so. Um, North Dakota League of Cities, they have their spring workshop tomorrow and Wednesday. I will be out there, uh, Naomi and Cory will all be out there for that, or the three of us will be out there for that workshop. Um, special election, just a reminder tomorrow was special, the special election is at the Horse Fire Hall, seven AM to seven PM. So, uh, please get out there and vote, trying to encourage people to do that. And we were talking about, uh, positions, uh, Chelsea mentioned earlier, yes, Hannah, uh, accepted a different position here a few weeks ago. Um, we posted the communications specialist position, we have three candidates that we'll be reaching out for interviews with. Uh, hoping to get those interviews scheduled towards the end of this week or early next week and we'll see how those interviews go. And then the last one I had is, I do like to give you an update on building permits, just so you're aware of where our numbers are at. As of last Friday, I believe it is, four sixteen, we had a hundred sixteen new homes, of which seventy-three have been processed so far. Um, I don't have the total permit volume when you're talking, talking new homes, remodels, everything. I believe we're in that ballpark of a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty permits right now. To give you a comparison, last year for the whole year was just over two hundred for combined permits, eighty-six new homes. So we are not far from total permits issued this year, uh, as we were for the whole year last year. Uh, when you compare to new home builds, we're a lot higher, the, the permits issued, we're a lot higher than quite a few of our neighbors, including West Fargo. So, uh, just wanted to give you a quick update on that. Uh, the spreadsheet, sir, the graphs that our billion inspector's staff do, just a reminder on the website are updated monthly, so after the month end, then they update the spreadsheet and then they put it up on the website, so I'm giving you information a little more real time, but, um, like I said, just that's where we're at.
Okay.
That's all I had.
So you got?
Yep.
Well, you took most of my thunder, so that's good. Um, just, uh, I'm just going to make a note here too that, you know, kind of backing up what Chelsea was talking about. Um, we're down, you know, communications person is gone now, Becky will be leaving this week, so. Uh, we just have to keep in mind, you know, that the staff is trying to keep up with what we've currently got ongoing. So, but we, we, we have to make sure, watch the workload and what we're requesting from the staff here going forward for a little while to while we get new people, you know, get those positions filled, so. Just want to make that note. Um, I also want to make sure that we thank Becky and Hannah for their services to the city, they were wonderful to work with and we're kind of, again, we're sad to see them go, but, you know, that's the nature of the beast here, that's how it works, so. Uh, tomorrow and Wednesday, Brenton, myself and Naomi will be in Bismarck for a workshop, so, uh, we'll have the phones with us, but we will be out of town here for a couple of days while we do that, so. That's all I've got, Sarah, what do you have?
Nothing too much this month, this month, uh, really kind of excited to get back to planning and zoning, yay. Um, got something accomplished this week. And then, uh, obviously if I could ask everyone to get out and vote tomorrow, whether you like me or not, go vote. I would also like to thank, uh, Becky and Hannah for their service, so.
Okay, Naomi?
That's, same here, just thinking about the staff that we have and, um, thank you for the continued hard work that you guys are doing. Um, short-staffed and we just appreciate you guys.
Okay.
For sure.
Chelsea?
Nothing really to report, I've just been working, I took over Dave's spot with the HR because I have a longer relationship with the employees. Um, so working with Brent on that, on those situations along with Cory. And also Naomi and I are working on planning with Hannah, leaving, we'll have to pick up some slack and keep that rolling. That's all I got.
Okay, sounds good, Jeff?
I don't have a whole lot, um, once again, I'd like to say thanks to Becky and Hannah and, um, they're going to be greatly missed, so, that's it, for sure.
All right, so with that, then I'm enter to a motion to adjourn.
So make that motion.
Chelsea, oh, Chelsea got you.
Oh, she beeked me.
Sir to the second, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, we carry you. Brett?
Yes, I know.
There was an open. Can you hit, can you hit the record?
You see your red button?
Hit that red button.
All right.
Hit the red button.
This is going to be pretty impressive. Now you guys got to figure out what to pay for.